Hi, everyone.
Under people.
I'm Rich Maston, CFA President. Welcome to CFA, welcome to the Cat Fancyers Association Town Hall Meeting. Building a new brand for CFA's future. We'll take a look at CFA's marketing efforts to re-energize the association and reshape our image and our offerings. Before we get started, I'd like to thank the CFA Board of Directors for recognizing the need, authorizing the funding necessary, and their ongoing support and foresight for this major project. I'd also like to thank the marketing team, the driving force behind CFA's new brand development and future marketing initiatives. Chair Mark Cannon, Mark has been involved with CFA since the 1970s as a reader, exhibitor, clerk, board member for 24 years, chair of numerous committees, and was CFA president for six years. Chair Melanie Morgan. Many of you know Melanie as a CFA Aubrey judge, board member, and chair in number of various committees. But you may not know that Melanie attended her first CFA show as an exhibitor in 1995 and was enamored with the cat fancy from then on. Melanie has a bachelor's degree in communications and an MBA in marketing and served as Vice President of Corporate Broadcasting in a top-level advertising agency for many years. Marketing Director Desiree Button. Desiree has been a reader for 15 years and officially joined CFA as their marketing director in 2018. In addition to the insight, Desiree brings to CFA from a business-savvy reader's perspective. She has a degree in fine arts and an MBA in information systems and 20 years of professional creative tech experience. Executive Director Aline Tartaglia. Aline began her career with CFA in 1982. Her organization skills were put to good use for planning a multitude of CFA international cat shows, annual meetings, and other projects. Aline's knowledge and experience with the many facets of CFA serve us well as our current executive director. Atomic Wash, a PR and branding agency out of Atlanta, Georgia, that has worked on accounts such as Nike, Fifth Third Bank, and Ben &amp; Jerry's. At the end of this presentation, we'll be answering questions. The chat feature is disabled for this meeting, so please use the Zoom raise hand icon at the end during the question and answer session. Melanie will now take us down memory lane to remind us of our humble beginnings and purpose of this project.
Need to unmute. Thank you, Rich, and hello, everybody. I hope I'm really looking forward to showing you this presentation. And what we want to start is celebrating cats since 1906. In the latter part, the 19th century, the importation of cats and the development of breeding programs spread from Britain to North America. Cat clubs and cat shows started across the United States, and in 1906, what we now know as CFA, the Cat Fancyers Association, was formed. At its inception, CFA had less than a handful of clubs and recognized only six distinct types of cats. The Abyssinian, the Mank, the Persian, the Russian Blue, the Siamese, and the non-petegrade domestic shorthairs, which went on to become our American shorthairs. Today, over 116 years later, CFA has registered an estimated 3 million cats and now recognizes 46 breeds as well as non-petegrade domestic cats. We are the world's premier pedigree cat registry. CFA has served tens of thousands of breeders. And together with fellow fanciers, we have celebrated thousands upon thousands of cats at our CFA-powered cat shows all around the world. We know our pedigree cats inside and out. We know how to care for cats, and we're advocates for nurturing cats, celebrating cats, and strengthening that human-feline bond. We are cat fanciers and members of the most respected, most imitated, and most elite organization of cat lovers in the world. So CFA has grown immensely over those past 116 years in so many ways, but there's always more work to do. One of the most important projects on the docket, I think you all agree, is a new website with improved speed, navigation, content optimizations to overall user experience. When we, the marketing committee, were tasked with creating CFA's new website, we knew that performing research on many levels would be the critical first step. Deciding on how we represent ourselves through use of color and imagery, style, and logo had to come on later in the project, though. In order to properly present who we are on the World Wide Web, we needed first to understand that ourselves. So what is CFA? How will we proceed? How do we want to be perceived? What's our story, our reason for being? What is the value proposition, our personality, our promise, our voice? Why do cat lovers like us? And how can they participate in our activities? These were all the questions and more that we needed an answer for. This project is the first time in CFA's history that CFA has worked with an agency to examine itself both from the inside and out in order to build an official brand, a comprehensive website, and a strategic plan for further associated growth. Research and discovery were the first steps towards this new CFA. It was a fascinating journey, and I'll share that with you as we move on. So to launch the project, we developed and released a very specific RFP. We reviewed submissions from agencies across the country, and after a few rounds of reviews and interviews with a short list of top contenders, our committee unanimously chose Atomic Wash. We felt strongly that Atomic Wash was the right agency to help research our brand, identify our voice, officially create that brand, design that visual identity, and the new website, and then help develop a strategic plan for growth moving forward. With our priorities and our resources in place, we began the research phase of the project. We learned about who we are and the challenges that we face. During that discovery phase, we were able to identify opportunities for growth. We began to develop a plan to support future generations of cat fanciers, breeders, exhibitors, and essentially all cat lovers. Research, lots of research. We needed to know where we were before we could determine where we had to go. Our plan was to hear from as many people as possible from the widest range of sources that we could. We wanted to hear from fanciers throughout the USA, Europe, Asia, the whole entire world. In order to assess the current state of the band, our agency heard from and met with key stakeholders both inside and out of CFA and with everyone from senior officers to local show organizers and newer exhibitors. Atomic Wash held interviews, assessed our current programs and our offerings. They experienced firsthand what it's like to be a spectator at a large CFA show. And then, with the help of marketing brand experts, they audited our website, our publications, our online offerings. The marketing and brand experts also did a deep dive into our competition to understand how they were comparing themselves to us, to CFA. Animal Welfare Associations, AKC, and other organizations dedicated to animals were examined and compared to determine how CFA fits into the pet healthcare industry as a whole. All that data from the research and interview phases went into an internal report, the CFA Brand Blueprint, which guides us moving our brand forward. So first, as a brand, who are we today? Simply said, CFA is a lot of things, but I'd like to highlight a few areas. We are the world's premier pedigree cat registry. Did I say it? Since 1906. We are the subject matter experts on pedigreed cats. Collectively, CFA has an unimaginable amount of information amongst us all. CFA is an elite brand for local cat shows. We didn't invent cat shows, but CFA and our member clubs took it to the next level by producing quality and prestigious shows worldwide. We're a multi-platform provider of information on pedigree cats. CFA educates breeders, cat show participants, and the public on cats. Where there is information about cats, CFA is there. CFA is an advocate for the recognition of pedigree breeds and their breeders. Equally important is that we're an advocate for all cats, regardless of whether or not they have a pedigree. Next slide. So what are we known for? We're definitely known for our history and our pedigree cat registry. And I know I'm repeating myself, but we've been around for a long, long time, since 1906. Not many companies can claim a 116-year history. We're known as a highly respected premier brand in global markets. That didn't happen without a lot of hard work. We're known for our top-tier cat judging and shows. And of course, we're known for being the leading authority on cats. So I think it's safe to say we're known for being obsessed with cats, but in a good way. So why do cat lovers love us? Because we are synonymous with the best cats in the world, because we bring prestige to the ownership of cats. We keep the legacy alive, and we preserve pedigrees. Because cat lovers feel the love that we have for cats, and they share that love. There's a sense of belonging and being accepted. CFA is one big family. Next slide. So based on the feedback and our brand blueprint, we've initiated a number of changes. And here's what we've done so far. We've created a new brand voice. That voice is our brand's personality. It's our unique way of presenting ourselves to the world, and it must run consistently throughout all of our communications. It's key to our success. We've designed a new logo and a tagline, which we're kind of excited to show you tonight. We've developed a new visual identity and guidelines for the usage. So in order to take you through all of that, next, Desiree will take you on a journey through our new voice and our visual identity.
Great, thanks, Melanie. Our brand identity starts with our brand voice. It establishes our positioning. It gives direction for our new brand and sets the tone in all of our communications. CFA's brand voice is how we speak to our audience and to the world. It's our unique personality and the persona of the association itself. Our brand voice is felt through our messaging and visual communications and is heard face-to-face at our events and seen in writing, such as on social media posts. As an association with passionate members, CFA's personality is not only perceived by what comes out of central offices, but by judges and show rings, by committee members on social media, and the practices of even our breeders. During the first phase of this project, the individuals were interviewed, and regardless of their level of involvement in CFA, whether they were breeders or board members, they all spoke directly from the heart with love. Their honest comments helped us immensely to define our voice. It's not surprising that during some of the interviews, we learned that our voice often feels snobbish, old-school, and unapproachable. We need your help to change that. We have to change it, and we really, really need your help. Our internal efforts to develop CFA's tone and voice is only the first step in expressing who we truly are. The onus is also on all of our members, all of our breeders, all of our judges, everyone, and especially leadership within CFA to commit to standing true to our voice. What follows are the voice attributes we chose based on our research results. Passion. We're passionate. A brand with a passionate voice always makes it clear that they are 150% in love with their message, their products, and what they're doing. CFA fanciers love cats so much that when they start talking about cats, they just can't stop. Inclusive. We're inclusive, and inclusivity isn't just about race, gender, orientation, or reaction to discrimination. It's about different worldviews and backgrounds coming together to share the love for cats. Demographics are changing amongst fanciers, and we're seeing new faces, younger faces, diverse faces, all eager to interact with our cats. And we can't forget that inclusivity isn't just about people either. Our message of all cats and our loving of all cats, regardless if it's a pedigree cat or not, needs to be reinforced. The world is constantly changing, and although we have no control over how the world changes, we do have control over how we can change to ensure our ongoing presence is positive in the world. In addition to respecting our past, we must focus on our future and welcome change instead of resisting it. We're knowledgeable. We're cat experts. CFA is widely regarded as the expert on cats. And whether it's the history of cats, the care of cats, the breeding of cats, the showing of cats, handling cats, judging cats, we're the experts. We know cats. We know cats. After all, we've been obsessing over them since 1906, obsessing in a good way. We know everything there is to know about cats, so we adore cats, and as part of CFA, we know you adore cats too. Now for the visual identity. Our visual images will represent CFA on our website and social media and our publications and print everywhere. After much exploration, we selected a logo with a cat on the move, just like us. Hit. Go. Well, there was sound with that, so I'm not sure why we didn't hear. I didn't hear it. I don't know if anyone else did. But introducing our new CFA logo, we had many different logos. In fact, our historical records indicate that we've had at least six different logos in the past 116 years. After many discussions, explorations, designs, refinement of designs, and refinement of design refinements, we're excited to debut the new CFA logo. The CFA logo has always been a strong symbol for our organization and its mission. As our original logo has a rich legacy behind it, it was important to preserve its integrity while at the same time modernizing it to appeal to a new generation of cat lovers, support our global growth, and propel us into the future. For obvious reasons, the design prominently features a cat. Our new masked cat proudly strides across the top of the CFA name, tail up and looking straight ahead, clearly projecting the message that our organization is moving forward. We also modernized the font in the CFA name and brightened up the gold tone of the lettering. Together, the updated fonts and color give the logo a bold, fresh, eye-catching look. The complete presentation, which includes our new tagline, "We Know Cats," resonates energy and confidence, leaving no question as to CFA's position in the pet industry and its enduring strength as an organization. CFA's logo is used in a large variety of ways, so we realize the importance of having slightly different versions to fit various needs, such as rosettes, show flyers, websites, signages. The logo can be used with or without the tagline, "We Know Cats." Our standard version, you can see, is number one and two. And then there's what we call the stack version in three and four, which is better for vertical situations. And then number five, the logo in the center, is for more casual use or when the space is limited. In addition to the logo itself, we've also developed a family of logos to showcase and give identity to the various programs under CFA's umbrella. This slide is from a page in our new brand guidebook, and it's an example of how programs will be identified visually. CFA is fortunate to have an incredibly large library of beautiful and outstanding studio-style photos of our pedigree cats. It is due to the generosity of our professional cat photographers and breeders and exhibitors. These pictures are widely used in CFA publications, on CFA's website, and throughout the cat fancy. There's only one element that's been missing from our photos over the years. It's the human-cat connection. Along with the photographer Sarah Baker, we started developing a lifestyle-type photo library to show the world connection between people and their cats. Cats are cherished and adored, and we want everyone to know about the strong bond we have with our feline family. We'll be attending a few shows with the photographer Sarah Baker. And so if you'd like to join us, please look for us in 2023. In January, we'll be starting that, so look for us to join the fun. As you can see from these sample ads, our new tagline, "We Know Cats," can easily stand on its own. It grabs the reader's attention and is sticky and easy to remember. Mark Twain once said, "If animals could speak, the dog would be a blundering, outspoken fellow, but the cat would have the rare grace of never saying a word too much." We know cats, not a word too much. Our brand guide is the instruction manual on how the CFA brand should be communicated. It contains the standards required to represent CFA correctly, both internally and externally. It's our digital rulebook that specifies every aspect of the look and feel of our new brand. Don't worry, we don't expect you to digest all of the information in the book or on these pages. We'll make a short version for everyone, and we'll be happy to always be there to answer your questions. This here is a page from the guidebook that displays fonts and the logo usage details. It's just an example of what we'll be presenting in the book. We selected a font that is readily available in mostly all software. It's called Montserrat. It's a font with a clean, contemporary look. It's the font we've been using throughout this presentation. Although our new primary font colors are gold and black and shades of gray, an extended palette of colors has been created. In addition to CFA's new visual identity, the marketing committee is working on other initiatives as well. Our president, Rich Maston, will go over what's to come.
Thank you, Desiree and Melanie, for the insightful information and presentation. And thank you also to Mark and Aline for the many hours of work that went into this over the past year to present this to everyone. Today, we illustrated for you CFA's new brand voice, CFA's new logo and tagline, giving you a glimpse into the brand guide. But the branching project is far from complete. The marketing team has begun working with developers on the new CFA website that will have the updated content, streamlined navigation, and improved user experience. Coming soon will be an e-commerce storefront where you can purchase items such as mugs, tote bags, shirts, and other items with the new CFA logo. We're also looking at ways to help clubs brand their events to create visual consistency across the organization. We're thinking strategically about readers and how we can help elevate the practices and the advocacy of pedigree cats in the world. We are analyzing strategies for growth and engagement in the areas of education, inclusivity, and membership. Everyone likes the feeling of belonging, and we want to tap into that. You'll see our identity changing as we begin to implement new design photography styles into our social media and advertisements. And you'll start to see partnerships between CFA and other pet industry organizations all develop with the next 116 years of growth in mind. To present CFA's new voice, we'll be occasionally developing short animations like this one.
All right, and hopefully the sound will work.
Thank you all for joining us. We'll now open the meeting for questions. Please raise your hand using the Zoom icon if you have a question. There is no chat feature. A few reminders on how to raise your hand in Zoom. If you're using a laptop or desktop, there should be a reactions icon on the Zoom menu bar. Click on that, and you will see a variety of options. Raise hand is probably the bigger button at the bottom. If you're using a tablet or phone, you should see the word "more," dot-dot-dot. Click on that, and there should be a button that says "raise hand." We'll get to as many questions as we can while still respecting everyone's time. So let's go ahead and start taking some questions.
Okay, it looks like Mary Kay has her hand up.
Okay, you have to know I was going to ask some questions. I was out of the room when you showed the slides with all the different various logos. Is there any way you can put that back up there?
Sure.
And that's it. That's all I had.
Let me hold on a minute. All right. Well. Not as easy as I thought, Mary.
Oh, you can go on to another question then.
Okay. All right, who's, I see that Steph has her hand up. Steph, you're on mute. You need to unmute yourself. There you go. Steph, did you have a question? You had your hand up. Maybe you don't have a question.
Yes, I do have a question.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. So as a member of a club here in Region Six and Secretary of TCCR Club, we have several pieces of CFA materials that have the old logo on them. We use them at our shows, we use them at the State Fair, and we would like to know what to do with the old logo materials.
Okay, I'll take that one. And we, just so you know, we will have a page online on our website after this meeting is over with some FAQs, answering these type of questions as well, plus the variety of logos you can download. We realized that transitioning to the new logo is going to take time. It's going to take time for us as well. What we ask is that anything you can change right away that might be electronic, let's say, a Facebook ad or an electronic show flyer, that you know, but we understand that you can't, especially when it comes to rosettes. If you're trying to use up some old rosettes or permanent flats in particular, we realize are difficult. So continue using what you have and just make every effort you can to transition over to the new logo as you start to replace items. Okay. Does that answer your question, Steph?
Yes, the only other thing I could ask is if we have tablecloths and things that were borrowed from CFA, do you want them back? They have the old logo on them.
Can you email me about that?
Sure.
Okay, because there's very few of those out. So if you'll just email me about that, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you.
So Sherry Schaefer, you're on mute. You had a question, so just unmute.
Hi, Aline. Thank, I wanted to thank everyone, especially to Desiree, who secretly shared with me the logo, which is adorable. I was wondering how I can get a hat. Where do we order hats?
You noticed. We'll have it at the store front. There'll be a CFA store. We're developing it now. We expect it to be rolled out within the next two weeks. Well, you'll be able to order things such as the hats, mugs, insulated tumblers, various types of apparel, phone chargers. We haven't quite finished selecting what we want on the website, but we are in that phase. So we will announce that as soon as it's available, and we'll continue to have announcements on the page on the website about the new logo. And there will be a link from the front page of the website to the new logo page.
All right, thank you. Good work, everyone.
Thank you.
Leslie Carr, you're on mute.
Not anymore. I have a question. You partially answered already, and that is the transition to this new logo. As far as is there a date that you're expecting everything to contain the new logo going forward? And it's, of course, what is that date? And second, how is that to be handled with things such as what you mentioned, permanent flats? Are you expecting that every club is to go out and order new permanent flats with the new logo? Or would the old logos still be allowed in some instances?
In some instances, such as the permanent flats, it is permitted. You know, all of our, all of our old logos, they're still CFA logos. They still identify CFA. We just ask that every effort be made to use the new logo. We ourselves, we're going to be using up some stock. We've kept things purposely low because we knew this was coming up. But for instance, the ring signs that we send you to the shows, we are modifying that. You know, that's probably going to take a month or two before shows start seeing them, because we have to get them printed and mailed out. We will have some 15-inch by 15-inch square signs that have the logo that we'll be sending to clubs, and you can put around your show. We will have some 15-inch by 15-inch square signs that have the logo that we'll be sending to clubs and you can put around your show hall. So we'll, we'll be doing that. But the answer to your question, there's no set deadline date. You know, we, we as in CFA itself, will have everything with our new logo by the, by next summer. And I say everything, I'm saying including the website. So but, but little by little, we will be introducing the new logo on printed items.
Leslie, did that answer your questions?
Kind of. It sounds like with the old logo, that would never actually be retired if you're not expecting to have things like the permanent flats reordered, because those currently do have the old logos on them. So in other words, we would still have both logos going forward then, at least within the show hall.
Yeah, but we don't think it's fair to ask the clubs to go to the expense of buying all new permanent flats, for example.
Oh, I agree. I'm not disagreeing at all about that. I just thought there might be a set date that, like all the material from CFA would come with the new logo as of May 1st. I don't know, pick a date. With the exception of, say, the flats, you know, but any other thing that is to go in a catalog, well, is it going to be? I'm just concerned with any club that's holding a show in the next couple of months. Are they going to wind up with, some of the pages are going to have a CFA logo and some of the pages are going to have the new logo? What is it going to look like?
There's a show this coming weekend. There's five shows in the United States alone. And their rosettes are going to have, you know, the old logo on them. I know Rich has gone to a show in the Rochester area and he'll, he'll be wearing the CFA hat with the new logo. It's from CFA's end of the things, we want to get things changed as quickly as we can. From the club's perspective, we understand if you've already invested money on things, then go ahead and continue using the old logo. But as you create new things, such as catalogs, flyers, ads in the newspapers or online, use the new logo. But we're not telling you to toss anything that you've already invested money in.
So a club that's having a show next month would have access to the new logo to download for their catalog or their whatever?
Yeah, that's going to be online later tonight, tomorrow morning at the latest. And we'll send out a news notice with the link so everybody can download it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda, you got your hand up and you're on mute.
I don't have a question. I have a compliment. I work in marketing and communications for graduate and professional admissions at the Ohio State University. And we are all about branding. And I work with branding all the time as well as AP Style. And what you people have put together is absolutely fantastic and on point. It, it looks good. I like the idea of the colors. I mean, everybody knows Ohio State is scarlet and gray, but our branding allows for other colors to be used. And everything I saw you have on this presentation is exactly what's in Ohio State's branding. And I think, I think applause to all of you for working on it. And I didn't see this before, so John shares nothing with me. So this is, I am so impressed. I really have been impressed. I even had my little applause thing up there for a while. So kudos to the board and to the marketing group. And that's fantastic. I'm impressed.
Thank you, Ron.
Welcome.
Teddy, you got your hand up and you're muted. Teddy?
Are we unmuted now?
Yeah, we are. Oh, you're fine now.
Yeah, hi, this is Steve with a question. Wondering at some point in the near future, the marketing team could share what the contractors' evaluation was of the CFA, the current CFA website, and what plans there will be for any changes.
We'll, we'll talk about it, Teddy. We, I'm sorry, Steve, we haven't considered it yet, but since you brought it up, we'll be glad to talk about it and see what we can do.
We, yeah, we've heard a lot of comments over the course of time, so we have a pretty good idea of what people are looking for. But we've, we've really just started pulling apart the current website and really putting a lot of work and effort and time into seeing what we have before we can decide the changes that we are looking at.
Thank you, Teddy. Vicki, you've got your hand up and you're on mute.
Hi. Will there be a Facebook frame with a new logo that will be available?
I can answer that one. Facebook no longer allows frames to be made for individual organizations. So the ones that you still see floating around are old ones or they're, they are done, like you can create one or we can create one. But Facebook doesn't have the ability just to take a frame to like lay over your image anymore. So if, if people want one, it has to be, each one has to be custom designed. So we would essentially have to build a frame and then put everyone's picture in it for them. What we could do is create a frame and then those who are like tech savvy enough could do it themselves. But, but like I said, Facebook doesn't, doesn't allow people to make them anymore automatically.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicki. Carolyn, I see your hand up and you're not even muted.
I unmuted myself. I know how to do that. I, I just want to echo what Rhonda, Rhonda said, and that is kudos to everybody involved with, you know, from the investigative work to the designs. I love the logo. I love the sleekness, the modernness. And I got to give a shout out to my girl Sarah. Those photos are beyond beautiful and just have such an emotional, human contact that it just really makes me want to cry. So congratulations, everybody, for the hard work. It's really, really lovely.
I think Sarah's, maybe we should have Sarah come on and introduce herself. The beautiful photos that you saw in the presentation are part of our new photography style by Sarah Baker. Sarah, if you raise, I don't know how we can.
I raised the hand. Hi. I just, I wanted to say just too, like, I'm just so impressed of like how everything looks. I love the new logo. I love the new look. That's just what I wanted to say. I can't wait to buy a hat. And just thank you to Desiree to bringing me on. I was a spectator. I loved going to cat shows because of the breeds. But I'm a photographer and I love taking photos of the, at the cat shows, but it's not necessarily about the cats all the time. It's about the love that you see, that the people have with their cats and their relationship. So thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Thank you so much.
Good job, everybody. Congratulations.
I did want to mention that this started a year ago when Daryl was president and we give Daryl thanks for his leadership on this and for allowing us to move forward. The board voted to expend considerable amount of money to do the branding and the website. The branding had to be done first because it, the, the website will take advantage of what we've learned and the colors and stuff that we're, we're doing here. But this has been a long project. Like I said, it's been a year. And we don't, we don't want to think that it's just something that's been done in the last month with, with this group. I don't see any more hands up. Has anybody else got a question?
We do have some questions coming from Facebook, so I'd like to start reading those so we can get those answered. And I'm wondering, the first animation, the main one that, that we had for you, the sound wasn't playing. So Aline, do you want to play that again for everyone?
Give me a second to pull that.
Why don't you go with the first question then, Desiree?
Okay, okay. The first question is from Kateri Trailhawk on Facebook. I'm sorry, I don't know what your name is, but she said, "I love this. I'm so excited. Will CFA be utilizing breeders as social media influencers?" So I think I can answer that. You know, you are very forward-thinking, Kateri Trailhawk. And we have not got that far yet, but I am definitely going to put that on our list of things to discuss. Once we get our brand completely laid out, then we can consider how we can have influencer, influencers involved in our brands. Let's see, what else do we have? It looks like Jennifer Deal is concerned about all the saved ribbons. Perhaps those are ribbons that they already have made for shows. Mark, can you talk about that?
And she's, I assume she's talking about the satin ribbons that we use at the shows for, that get reused over and over again, or that the owner wants, can't take the permanent flat but wants a second one. And go ahead and use the existing stock. It's just that when you need to replenish the stock, please order it with the new logo on it. But if you've got a lifetime supply of satin ribbons, by all means, use them, don't toss them.
Okay.
Okay, I think it looks like Aline's ready with the, the first video again. Thanks, Aline. I hope you were as amused by it as we have been.
There's still a couple more questions. Here's another one from Mo. What is the CFA footprints in other countries besides the USA?
I guess I'm not sure what does, what does footprint mean as far as?
Yeah, but that one, I mean, I, I think that we're talking about our, our brand voice probably and share of market in each of these different countries. And the answer to that is, is it's ever expanding and it's going to change from country to country. I mean, there are some countries where we certainly have a far stronger presence and, and others where we're beginning to evolve and we're at different stages of the learning curve. So certainly we're committed to a global, consistent brand. But that will take time and will evolve at different levels in different countries.
Okay. Holly Mueller would like to know, where can she get a hat?
They will be on our store. That'll be released in a couple of weeks. We'll make sure that there's caps available.
We'll, we'll send out a CFA announcement when they're ready with a link to the CFA store, so you can see what products are available with the logo on it, the price, et cetera.
Okay.
Kathy Calhoun has a hand up.
Okay.
Kathy?
Can you hear me? Yes. I just wanted to address the question about the global footprint in that. And Melanie did a lovely job of addressing that. I just want to echo what she has said and also to advise that, you know, our presence in some areas, as Melanie said, are more prominent than in others. But we have a global footprint. And we intend to, and our desire is to continue to promote CFA and expand CFA where possible. And one of the lovely things about that sort of thing is that we, we have new areas or areas that don't have a lot of existing materials. So we'll be able to, to continue to grow using the brand new label, logo and ensure that those areas are maintained and they're, so I just wanted to add that to the comment.
For those who don't know, Kathy is the chair of the ID Committee and Matthew Wong is the associate, co-chair of that committee. Thanks, Kathy. Okay, Desiree, you have some more from Facebook?
Yep, there's more questions. Was the logo, this is from Orca, Orca Starbuck. Was the logo inspired by the logo of the fanciers breeder referral list? I can answer that by saying, no, not. And I'd have to look to see what their logo even looks like. Oh. Okay, it's like, I see what it looks like. I can see the stuff and similarity. Our agency is the one who came up with the design and I'm sure they never saw the FBRL logo. So I don't know. Have you guys seen that before? Do you have anything to say about that?
I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. Okay, next question. Will the Lands End Stores, this is from Carmen. Will the Lands End Stores start using the new logo or will there be a new provider for CFA Spirit Ware?
There will be a new provider for CFA Spirit Ware and that, we will have that store online in a couple of weeks. We, we are testing out the apparel. We want to make sure that whatever apparel we put online is something that we're happy with as well. But we will be having that store. Right now, Lands End doesn't have its logo. They wouldn't have the new logo until we authorized it. They wouldn't be able to order anything from Lands End.
At this point, we're not planning to authorize it. We're planning to use a new supplier that we've been working with in other areas.
Linda Bartley wants to know, for those of us that couldn't join Zoom because of the 100% limit, can we see it again?
Yeah, we're going to have the link online. We'll have that. Well, we'll have, just like you do the Zoom board meetings where there's a link online. You can look to it later. We're going to put that up quickly.
Okay. It looks like that might be it. I think there was some more. My question, they're not going up. There was more comments, but I can't see them for some reason now. So if anyone has any more questions, please type them in. If not, I think it might be a wrap.
You could also put questions on the Facebook official CFA discussion group and we can answer them there for you. Or if you want to send them privately to Aline or to one of the committee members, we'll be happy to respond privately to them.
Okay.